Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, June the 3rd, 2019. This evening we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Village Clerk Promote Shaw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts.
Here.
Trustee Sutker.
Here.
Trustee Elrich.
Here.
Trustee Bromberg.
Here.
Trustee Klein.
Here.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Here.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Here. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion is in order. Trustee Klein seconded by Trustee Gray Keeler. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody wants to have removed? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye. The motion passes. This evening we have two proclamations I would like to bring to everybody's attention, both of a historic nature. The first one is a proclamation honoring Charcoal Oven, family-owned restaurant, which is now celebrating its 70th anniversary. From what I have been able to tell from doing a little bit of research, I believe Charcoal Oven has the longest-serving liquor license in the history of the village of Skokie.[166.84][166.84](APPLAUSE). I think that's notable. If any of you have been to the Charcoal Oven, I think you will understand why. And I won't say, I won't reveal too much else beyond that. It is a wonderful establishment and I recommend it to everybody. Whereas Charcoal Oven, a family-owned and run restaurant in Skokie since 1949, celebrated its 70th anniversary on June 1st, 2019. And whereas Charcoal Oven was established by Philip Georges, who attended Northwestern University and frequented The Little Club before going off to serve in World War II and came back to take over the restaurant and renamed it Charcoal Oven. And whereas by the 1950s, Philip Georges added a modern kitchen to cook up Charcoal Oven's delicious dining fare, fresh fish, Greek chicken, lamb chopped, and more, served on crisp white linen tablecloths with gleaming silverware. It's still that way. Whereas many regular customers are known to call and request their favorite dishes that might not be featured on the menu, but Charcoal Oven invites its customers to ask for any dish they don't see on the oven, on the menu. And Sonia Carlsson, who worked at the Charcoal Oven for over three decades, will prepare them for you. Whereas Charcoal Oven is now under the direction of Philip Georges's daughter Maria and her husband Rich, uh, Rich I believe is still the bartender.[280.58][280.58](LAUGHTER). I will say no more except he makes a great brandy Manhattan.[286.62][286.62](LAUGHTER). And her husband Rich and their hospitality continues to provide enjoyment for Skokie residents and visitors from nearby communities in the North Shore, Chicago, and visitors from other states and countries. And whereas Charcoal Oven has contributed to Skokie's economy for 70 years and provide, has provided jobs and contributed to our community's economic growth. Now therefore I, George Van Dusen, Mayor of the village of Skokie, do hereby proclaim June 3rd, 2019, as Charcoal Oven's 70th anniversary celebration day in Skokie. And do hereby congratulate Charcoal Oven for their commitment to their business and to our community. We wish Charcoal Oven much continued success. And Maria is with us and I believe your husband Rich is with you as well.[351.19][351.19](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much.[353.19][353.19](LAUGHTER). I'm Greek.
Are you Greek Manhattan?
No, I'm not.[357.19][357.19](LAUGHTER). Thank you, Mayor.
I know because that, that, uh, that, the projector light is right in my head, face.[365.12][365.12](LAUGHTER). Thank you, Mayor. This is more. Thank you. Oh, is the microphone on? Wow.[371.12][371.12](APPLAUSE). I'd like to thank the Academy. No, I'm just kidding.[375.81][375.81](LAUGHTER). Um, no, even more importantly, thank you Mayor and the council. You have no idea how proud this is, this day is for my family, for the many generations of employees that we've had, whose family members have worked there, for the support from the community. And I still get a chuckle when people come in here and tell me that they were a busboy 55 years ago.[406.12][406.12](LAUGHTER). And without that support and the dedication and the almost a little over a decade that I stepped in to take the restaurant over with my dad so he wouldn't sell it and keep it going, that we are on our fourth generation of family coming in and we certainly have plans of keeping that going and look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you so much. And I just would also like to say one little thing. This week is so special for my family because not only June 1st, the, the day that my father bought the restaurant, his birthday is June 5th, and he landed on Omaha Beach June 6th.
Oh, my.[454.94][454.94](APPLAUSE).
And after surviving that, they sent him to the Battle of the Bulge, liberation of the concentration camps, and then on to Paris, and he obviously, thank God, made it, made it home. But our roots are here and my husband and I have become residents of Skokie in the last year and a half. We bought a house and so we're all in.[482.53][482.53](LAUGHTER). Thank you again very much.
Thank you.[486.78][486.78](APPLAUSE). And secondly, this evening, it's a great privilege to be able to honor truly a person who is historic in the history of the village of Skokie and, I might add, in the state of Illinois, Thomas E. O'Brien.[510.12][510.12](APPLAUSE). Uh, I will read the resolution and then I would like to make a couple of short comments as well beyond the resolution. Whereas Thomas E. O'Brien started teaching in Skokie School District 73 and a half 60 years ago in 1959. And whereas June 1st, 2019, was Thomas O'Brien's retirement celebration for those 60 years of dedicated teaching and service to the district. And whereas in 2008, the addition to Oliver McCracken Middle School was completed and dedicated to Mr. O'Brien. It is named the Thomas E. O'Brien Edition. And whereas Thomas E. O'Brien is the district's historian, he literally remembers every staff member and student, he values traditions and ensures those traditions to continue. And whereas Thomas O'Brien has taught thousands of students, many of whom have gone on to have careers as doctors, lawyers, newspaper columnists, and countless other careers. And whereas Thomas E. O'Brien has passionately taught 7th and 8th grade social studies and literature, but more importantly, he has educated and influenced generations of students in District 73 and a half. Now therefore I, George Van Dusen, Mayor of the village of Skokie, along with the village's elected officials, do hereby proclaim June 3rd, 2019, as Thomas E. O'Brien Day in Skokie. And hereby commend and congratulate Tom O'Brien for his inspiration, drive, and determination of sustaining 60 years of educating the youth of this great village. We wish you much happiness in your retirement years. I believe, at least I've been told, that Mr. O'Brien is the second-longest-serving teacher in the state of Illinois.[692.82][692.82](APPLAUSE). But it's more than Tom's longevity. It's also his passion for teaching. I have been over to McCracken School on many occasions and it's not an exaggeration to say, he literally knows all of the students from the past as well as all of his present students. And it's always with great affection. And I would like to ask Trustee Klein, who was a student of Mr. O'Brien's (LAUGHTER), if he might like to say a couple words.
I would be honored, sir. Uh, Mr. O'Brien, speak directly to you, sir. I sit before you, the official of the village of Skokie. I learned from you to be involved. I learned from you ethics. I learned from you civics. And I learned how to present myself and how to be a man from you. And from all of us, I can't thank you enough for all you've given to all of us. And I still could never call you by your first name.[774.55][774.55](LAUGHTER). Just wanted to thank you for everything, sir. And this honor is greatly, greatly, and one thing I must say, remember how I acted back then?[788.00][788.00](LAUGHTER). I'm sorry.[790.00][790.00](LAUGHTER).
I think there's a chair in the principal's office named the Ralph Klein chair. Uh, there are several people here, with those who are here to, who either had Mr. O'Brien, and I don't want you to reveal your ages, uh, but those of you who are also here to help honor Tom, would you stand for just a moment, please?[816.82][816.82](APPLAUSE). Thank you.[818.82][818.82](APPLAUSE). And I think most of you know Kate Donigan is the superintendent of District 73 and a half. Kate, thank you for coming. Tom, would you? Kate? Ralph?
Thank you so much.[846.13][846.13](LAUGHTER).
I can't believe it. I can't.
This is wonderful.
Remember, I was in the class that was near Greece.[856.82][856.82](LAUGHTER).
Thank you. Certainly.
I'm welcome.
Thank you very much. I know people think it's unusual that someone would teach 60 years in the same place, but I have changed rooms over the years.[885.32][885.32](LAUGHTER). And I have changed subjects over the years. And although it may appear that things are the same, they really have changed. And, you know, I could go back to 60 years ago when as a young lad I was offered a job
Oven and Tom O'Brien.
in this district, a, a tiny district in a small village, aside a large city.
They've both made wonderful contributions. Thank you.[912.13][912.13](APPLAUSE). And before we move on, one, uh, final item under proclamations.
I took it and lived happily ever after because it has been magical. I don't know that this would have happened if I were in the other community.
This coming Friday, June 7th, the village of Skokie joins the nation in observing National
I think this is the most wonderful community. I have had the most wonderful students.
Gun Violence Awareness Day to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence.
I have never felt like I worked a day in my life. It's been just something I love to do, a place I love to be.
On Friday, we will renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all
And long before you came up with the slogan "Skokie welcomes everyone," it certainly
we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and to encourage responsible gun ownership.
welcomed me and I thank you also very much.[952.38][952.38](APPLAUSE).
And if on Friday you can, wear orange as a way of symbolically showing your support for National Gun Violence Awareness Day, particularly in light of the recent tragic So that would be on Friday, June the 7th, 2019. Next, under award presentations this evening, the 2019 Skokie Awards for Artistic Excellence will be presented by Pam Garberini on behalf of the members of the Skokie Fine Arts Commission.
I'm Pam Garberini. I'm the vice chairman of the Skokie Fine Arts Commission. Very happy to be here tonight. And before I forget, I would like to acknowledge all of the fine arts commissioners who have joined us today. Can we have all of you just stand up for, for a minute?[1041.83][1041.83](APPLAUSE). Thank you. We give two awards every year for artistic excellence, for people or groups who have really made a contribution to the arts in Skokie. This year, our individual award for artistic excellence goes to Mr. Nicholas Wyatt. Nick has assisted the Fine Arts Commission with distinction for 10 years, serving as our liaison with the village. So that part was his job, but he did so much that went above and beyond that role. He helped to grow our SOAR program for student artists and helped to launch Skokie Through the Lens. During the years that this was a traveling photography exhibit, it was usually Nick who helped dissemble the display, drive it to its next location, set it all up again. He was instrumental in bringing numerous outdoor sculptures and vibrant colorful murals to downtown Skokie and other parts of the community. He launched an app to encourage visitors to enjoy Skokie's abundance of public art and created several videos about Skokie's mural installations. One of these videos received a national award for its excellence at depicting Skokie as an arts-centric community. He developed and nurtured personal relationships with many local artists. These relationships helped to provide some dynamic speakers for our annual SOAR receptions and also encouraged unique dedicated art for Skokie spaces. He made it a good experience for the artists while adding to the positive fine arts reputation of Skokie. For all that he has done to enhance the arts in Skokie, we're pleased to present this award to Nick Wyatt.[1168.33][1168.33](APPLAUSE). Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
I take it you're choosing not to speak.[1176.08][1176.08](LAUGHTER). Okay. Um, our, our group award this year goes to Skokie Theater Madcap Productions. Madcap Productions became the resident production and management company for the Skokie Theater in February of 2014. Each year, an estimated 14,000 people attend productions at the Skokie Theater, including plays, musical entertainment, comedies, storytelling, children's theater, and more. The breadth of the Skokie Theater's programming appeals to a wide intergenerational audience. Recently scheduled or upcoming programming includes folk singers, a Frank Sinatra cover performer, a short play festival, a magician, the play Golda's Balcony, a show featuring Wayne Messmer, several comedy acts, a tropical music show, and the musical 1776, which I believe is rehearsing as we speak. Madcap Productions launched the successful Skokie Idol competition, recognizing artistic talent in both adult and young performers. This initiative has grown in popularity each year. Through a recent grant from the Skokie Theatricals, an affiliated nonprofit organization, the Skokie Theater is offering free theater programs and camps for children in the community. Wendy Kaplan is a generous community citizen, becoming involved with special events and programs developed by the downtown Skokie merchants groups and providing space for programming during the Skokie Backlot Bash. Wendy and Wayne have served on numerous committees and contributed to the growth of downtown Skokie. It is our pleasure to award the Artistic Excellence Award to Wendy Kaplan and Wayne Mel for Madcap Productions.[1298.15][1298.15](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. You're very welcome. Congratulations.
I'm not real big on this public speaking stuff. I'm the person behind the scenes, you know, I'm the one that hires all the performers. I don't, I don't do this. But I would like to thank you all so very much. Either Wayne nor I actually live in Skokie, though I've been contemplating recently. But I adore this community. I love it for its diversity. I love it for its wide range of age-related demographics, every religion under the sun, every being. We, they are not only all welcome in Skokie, but as we speak, the Serbian theater is now rehearsing to perform in Serbian this weekend. And we believe in promoting theater of all kinds, performing arts of all types that appeal to everyone. And for this, I really thank you.[1317.15][1317.15](APPLAUSE).
Mel? We do want to thank Nick. As you can tell, Nick is the quiet one.[1327.01][1327.01](LAUGHTER). But if you ever want to get an idea of what is going to be happening, just stop by Nick's office and you will find replicas of all kinds of sculptures that all of a sudden turn up in the village. He's uniquely qualified to be the liaison to our Fine Arts Commission as well as our Public Arts Commission. He does dual duty. And of course, Wendy and Mel and Madcap Productions are a hidden treasure in the village. If you ever want to just spend an evening of pure pleasure, just take in, without knowing what you're going to see, a production at the Skokie Theater. It's a small intimate theater that puts on great productions and you will never be disappointed, I can assure you. So I'd like to ask everybody to give Charcoal Oven, Tom O'Brien, Nick Wyatt, and Wendy and Mel a round of applause.[1404.13][1404.13](APPLAUSE). And of course, we want to thank the Skokie Fine Arts Commission for all of the work they do continuously to bring us great art and the SOAR program and so many other things. Let's take a short break so we can all congratulate our honorees this evening and then we'll resume. I know everybody is interested in the intergovernmental agreement on Phase 1 engineering with Cook County. Yes?
I'm very interested in that.
It's coming up. So we'll take a short break.
I'm not real big on this public speaking stuff. I'm the person behind the scenes, you know, I'm the one that hires all the performers. I don't, I don't do this. But I would like to thank you all so very much. Neither Wayne nor I actually live in Skokie, though I've been contemplating recently. But I adore this community. I love it for its diversity. I love it for its wide range of age-related demographics, every religion under the sun, every being. They are not only all welcome in Skokie, but as we speak, the Serbian theater is now rehearsing to perform in Serbian this weekend. And we believe in promoting theater of all kinds, performing arts of all types that appeal to everyone. And for this, I really thank you.
We do want to thank Nick. As you can tell, Nick is the quiet one. But if you ever want to get an idea of what is going to be happening, just stop by Nick's office and you will find replicas of all kinds of sculptures that all of a sudden turn up in the village. He's uniquely qualified to be the liaison to our Fine Arts Commission as well as our Public Arts Commission. He does dual duty. And of course, Wendy and Mel and Madcap Productions are a hidden treasure in the village. If you ever want to just spend an evening of pure pleasure, just take in, without knowing what you're going to see, a production at the Skokie Theater. It's a small intimate theater that puts on great productions and you will never be disappointed, I can assure you. So I'd like to ask everybody to give charcoal oven Tom O'Brien, Nick Wyatt, and Wendy and Mel a round of applause. And of course, we want to thank the Skokie Fine Arts Commission for all of the work they do continuously to bring us great art and the SOAR program and so many other things. Let's take a short break so we can all congratulate our annual reads this evening, and then we'll resume. I know everybody is interested in the intergovernmental agreement on Phase One Engineering with Cook County. Yes?
I'm very interested in that.
It's coming up. So we'll take a short break.
Thank you, Mayor Van Dusen and Village Board. Good evening, everyone. Item A is regarding Crawford Avenue, Oakton Street to Gulf Road. Phase One Engineering Intergovernmental Agreement with the County of Cook. Excuse me, I have a cold this evening. The Village of Skokie has been working with the County of Cook to improve Crawford Avenue between Oakton Street and Gulf Road. In order to continue to take every step that the village can take and ultimately expedite the project, the village has taken the lead in selecting the Phase One Engineering Firm, the cost for which will be completely reimbursed by the county. An intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Skokie and the County of Cook is necessary in order to proceed with the selection of an engineering firm. I concur with staff's recommendation for the approval of a resolution authorizing the village to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Cook for this project. Mayor and Board approval is respectfully requested.
A motion on the intergovernmental agreement regarding Crawford Avenue is in order. Trustee Roberts, seconded by Trustee Ulrich. Sir, did you wish to speak?
Yeah.
Do you want to speak here?
Up here, please. If we could have your name and address, please.
Hello, Board and others. I'm a little nervous. I didn't expect this. I left multiple messages for Mr. Lockerbie regarding this, and I never got any phone calls back, so I didn't know that this was on the docket. My name is David Lawler. I live at 9439 Crawford Avenue. Technically, it says Evanston, but I'm in Skokie, anyway. I understand we need an engineering study. I represent, we have a 99-member Facebook group, and we have 61 signees on a petition.
We just started two weeks ago.
We just started two weeks ago, and I haven't fully canvassed all the way down to Oakton yet. We're concerned because I just spoke to Mr. Lockerbie and Mr. Cook, and he said that Oakton, I mean Crawford is going to look like Crawford south of Oakton. And the people who I am representing and the people who live on Crawford, that's not what we want. I don't want a four-lane, you know, high-speed thoroughfare for people to drive through Skokie as fast as possible. Crawford is a residential tree-lined boulevard that we all live on, and yes, it is falling apart. It needs to be repaired. That is absolutely 100% true. But I don't, every other municipality around us doesn't have nearly the same amount of four-lane thoroughfares through it. If you go to Evanston, you go to Wilmette, you go to Niles, you go to Glenview, they try to maintain the neighborhood feel. In Skokie, or, you know, I'm not saying it's you all, but we happen to have more of these giant four-lane commercial strips that break up our neighborhoods. There's no, and then the one thing that's really terrible about Crawford is there's no place to cross the street. There's no crosswalks. It's a half a mile between stoplights with people with speeds approaching 50 and 60 miles an hour. And there's a park across the street that I spoke to Mr. Cook, and he suggested that I walk an extra four tenths of a mile so I can walk down to church, cross the street safely, and then walk back to the park instead of just crossing the street because it's unsafe. We have no crosswalks. We have a synagogue that was just built there, an Orthodox synagogue, where they walk their children to services, and they can't cross the street. There's a school, there's, and we have heavy commercial trucks going at high speeds. We just want Skokie to be what we thought we were getting into, which is a neighborhood, a place you can walk with your pets, with your children. Your children can ride bikes. I don't know if any of you have ever tried to walk along Crawford. It's like walking next to the expressway. That's not what we want.
And when we bought, there was parking on the street, and we expect there still to be parking. And that seems to be the number one issue. No one wants to lose the parking on the street. A lot of people-
Oh, this is my wife, Tina Pinkston.
Same, 9439.
She lives at the same address. Sorry.
A lot of the people that we've spoke to don't, they only have one car garage, they only have another place to park right behind it if they can do that. If they have any visitors, they have nowhere to park, and that's why they've always been able to have somebody park there. That's what the street was made for, from what we've understood. It has not been properly maintained that you can actually have this sort of weight on the trucks, and that's why we started this group. And I know maybe we're late to the game, but we want a seat at the table, and that's just what we're asking.
And I mean, we want Skokie to be better, not a thoroughfare for everybody to drive as fast as possible to somebody, to some other suburb. That's not what we're here for. We want a good place to live.
We just want to know when things are, like if we leave a message for somebody and something like this is on the docket, we would think that, especially since he loves making phone calls, that somebody would have returned him and said, you know what, why don't you prepare a little paragraph so you can come in and tell us, instead of us just running here after dinner and winging it. We would be better.
And me being dressed to the nines to address the Board, and I apologize.
That's all that we ask for, is that we're included.
It's nothing to apologize for.
Well, you know, I mean, had I known I was speaking publicly, I wouldn't be wearing a T-shirt and old shorts that I painted.
It's a nice T-shirt.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is a Skokie animal shelter. I mean, but, so we just, I mean, and a lot of our neighbors, they park on Crawford. And if Crawford, if you eliminate parking, you know, these people bought these homes with the right, we don't live in the city. You get to park in front of your house. And when I spoke to Mr. Cook, he mentioned that they want to ban parking. And I spoke to Larry Sufferton, and he said they want to get rid of parking on Crawford. That's only going to make it faster and more dangerous.
And I ride my bike, and most of my neighbors do too, and if we want to go to where the bike trail is over going towards the mall or anywhere else, it's really hard to cross that street. There's so much traffic, there's no stop signs, you know, you're just kind of winging it. And I'm an adult, I wear a helmet, but there are a lot of children on the street too, and we're worried about them as well. So we just want a seat at the table.
Yeah, we just, we just want you all on the Board to consider, you know, the walkability of Skokie, to make, we want to, it's a village. You know, it's, it's not a city. It's not a high-speed thoroughfare for the people of Wilmette and Glenview and Kyneworth and Wimacko.
To drive through.
To drive through as fast as possible. And, you know, Crawford is not a commercial strip. It's all houses. There are, I believe there's maybe five businesses with the Crawford address.
Yeah, not even that.
And they're on just those major corners.
So to turn it into a four-lane road that is, you know, basically high speed, because when it's a half a mile between stoplights, people have a tendency to go really fast. I mean, we're not, you know, everybody here is not dumb. We know that people go way too fast. And when you're in a neighborhood driving that fast, people are going to get hurt. And I will publish it, and I will send it to Mr. Lockerbie. There was actually a study by the University of Colorado that said that protected bike lanes actually increased the safety of roads by 44%, and that's for cyclists, pedestrians, and drivers. So, I mean, maybe a bike lane would be something we might consider, but as I said, there are many of us, there will be more, and we really want Crawford to be treated like a residential street. I mean, I understand it's an arterial, but if you go to every other municipality around here, their arterials are single-lane, they have bike lanes on them, they have stop signs, they have crosswalks. I was just coming down Oakton to come here, and there's those signs that say state law, you must stop for people in the crosswalk. Well, there's none on Crawford. There's not one. There is not one crosswalk between Gulf, church, Dempster, Maine.
Well, you have one in church.
No, but I meant, I mean, I'm talking to major stoplights. There isn't one between any of them, and that's not safe. That kind of bifurcates our neighborhood. What happens if, like, a child wants to play with his friend on the other side? Does he have to walk a half a mile down to wherever, cross the street, and walk half a mile back because he wants to go play with his little friend? That's, that's not neighborhood. Thank you for hearing us out. You all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. What is your, what, give us, your last name is Lawler?
Lawler, L-A-W-L-O-R.
Okay.
And mine's Pinkston, P-I-N-K-S-T-O-N.
Okay, we have a motion on the table on the Phase One Engineering only. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Brumberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Don't we hear from Eric first?
Oh, we do.
It's okay.
Okay, then I.
Trustee Gray Killer?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye. The motion passes, and John, and you will be getting together.
I got their phone number on the call in first thing in the morning, and again, my apologies for not returning your call. I did not receive a call from you. I take from the comments that were made tonight, specifically about the stop sign. Eric has been fielding all of the calls regarding Crawford, and so my staff may have been giving your messages to Eric since he and you have talked. But this is beginning the design phase, and we'll continue the dialogue with you. I will call you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Items B, C, and D were approved under tonight's consent agenda, and that completes my report this evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is report of our corporation comto, Michael Lord.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Good evening, everyone. Item, excuse me, item A was an ordinance which was on the consent agenda at the beginning of this evening's meeting and was adopted at that time. Item B is on the agenda for first reading tonight. This ordinance will authorize the creation of an Interested Parties Registry for the current or any future Tax Increment Finance District, also known as TIF, as required by the Tax Increment Allocation Development Act cited in my note. These registries adopt rules and prescribe the requisite forms for residents and organizations within the village to be placed on an Interested Parties Registry for future or proposed redevelopment project areas. If there are questions? If not, Mayor, this ordinance will be on-
I have a question. May I ask a question, Mayor?
Of course.
I just, Michael, is this a new amendment to the TIF statute, or why are we creating this registry now at this point? Or this ordinance? Is this something required by state law?
It is required by state law as the village considers the next phase of downtown development. It will likely require a new TIF, and this is the very first step in that process. It establishes a registry in order for people that are interested to stay informed.
But it's not new in the context that we have had, we, I'm sorry. It's not new in the context that we have, this board has passed them in the past periodically. I think there was at least one, if not two, before.
This, this has been standard procedure for us for every TIF district that the village has embarked upon. What do we have, five in the past, with only two being active currently?
But basically, this, anyone who was interested in, for example, our new TIF, they could register, then they would be notified of all meetings, hearings, et cetera, et cetera. So basically, it's a way for them to receive notice of what's going on with this, with any specific tip in Skokie.
That is correct.
That will be on the agenda for the next-
As I said, that'll be on the June 17 meeting for second reading, and that would then complete my report for this evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is report of our plan commission, Paul Luke with Peter Pyer. Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the board. At the May second meeting of the plan commission, we heard request of Sabid Redzik for a special trade contractor's office at forty forty-nine Main Street in a B1 service commercial zoning district. The petitioner began operating a special trade contractor's office at the subject site in violation of the village code at some point after opening an electrical supply business named Brand Electrical Supply at the location in two, in twenty, twenty oh six. A recent village inspection of the subject site revealed that the electrical supply business is no longer operating from this building. The current business, Beta Electric Incorporated, operates a small office area within the front of the building, and the remainder of the building is used to store equipment and parts that are needed by the employees working in the field. A total of two employees work for the company, but are typically only in the building in the morning to check on work schedules and pick up tools and parts for their project at the job site. Two parking, two parking spaces are present behind the building and are accessible from the public alley. The plan commission concurs with the staff's recommendation to grant special use.
A motion on Plan Commission Case twenty nineteen dash thirteen P, special use permit for forty forty-nine Main Street is in order. Trustee Gray Keeler, seconded by trustee Klein. Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Roberts?
So, is, is Mr. Red, Redzik here this evening, or?
I do not see him.
Okay. So, but I understand from the plan commission hearing, uh, he had no objection and he thought it was a good idea. There's a lot of concrete in front.
Yeah, he, he-
He was on a, uh, do the landscaping and the forestry.
He wants to improve on that.
Yes. So is, is that a part of the conditions of the-
Yes.
-plan, as well as the bike, uh?
Yeah, he has no objection to any of the recommended, uh, the conditions.
The site plan. The existing site plan here that's being presented, that will become part of the ordinance, and it shows the landscaping in the front and also the bike rack up here towards Main Street, close to the entrance.
If nobody else, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Satker?
Aye.
Trustee Elrich?
Aye.
Trustee Brumberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Vandus?
Aye, the motion passes.
That concludes, that concludes my report.
Thank you. The concluding item on the agenda this evening is citizen comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? If you would come to the microphone and give us your name and addresses, please.
My name is Margaret Fite Clark, and I live at seventy-nine oh seven North Trip. Dear Mayor Vandusen, council lorge, and village trustees, I have a letter here that I would like to submit to the public record, but I'd like to read part of it to you right now. I want to start by saying that I'm grateful that you heard the voices of your community and chose to permanently table the low, the minimum wage resolution that was under consideration a couple weeks ago. I want you to know that many of us who spoke out against the resolution share your worry about the health of businesses in Skokie. We know we need strong businesses in order to continue to be a vibrant community that serves everyone. I enjoy walking from my house to get groceries at Marketplace, a Friday night drink at the Karah, and a sought-after household item at Crafty Beaver or Ace, and I would hate any of those businesses to go away. Skokie is a more vibrant and welcoming place than it was during my teenage years, and all these positive changes are a testament to your efforts. And it's been fun to be here tonight to see all the efforts of the, of the community that makes Skokie a special place. However, I do think we can continue to grow in order to be more fully inclusive and more present to those not represented in this room. I know a lot of your attention has been focused on how challenging the economic climate is for businesses, but I hope in the future we might find a way to see that working families' needs are more robustly represented here. District sixty-nine superintendent Margaret Clausen directed me to illinoisreportcard.com, which has statistics about the different school districts in Skokie. And of the seventeen hundred students in her school, it notes that fifty-three percent of these students are low-income. I had an opportunity to look at my district, and seventy-three and a half, where I live, over thirty percent of the students are low-income. So I find myself wondering how many of these school parents are hourly wage earners, and how many of these parents work in Skokie. We are all aware that at the federal level, immigrant families are under enormous pressure. There are many devastating policy changes being proposed right now that would, um, alter public benefits to immigrants. And I know this will adversely impact many of our immigrant families here. I know we have a wonderful social service safety net in Skokie, but I'd love to see our community be more visionary and a ray of hope for these families. As an ESL teacher in our school, school community, I'm aware that many of the immigrant parents I've taught have greatly suffered just to get to this country. They've lost family members, they've seen corruption, they've seen human rights squashed and whole regimes fall. I know that I myself don't appreciate enough the precious gift of our own democracy. I encourage this chamber to consider ways to make sure that their processes, that your processes here are as democratic as possible, and that a greater variety of voices are heard here. Given the lack of regard for voters and the number of lives impacted by the proposed resolution, I also ask that the trustees consider the processes through which issues are deemed agenda-worthy. I urge you to find ways to make high-impact issues more visible to everyone, especially when the timelines are short and a matter is urgent. I encourage this Democratic chamber to be more proactive about reaching out to impacted constituents so their voices may be heard. In return, I commit to do my part and to be more vigilant and engaged about local matters going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Clark, I live at, at least seventy-nine oh seven North Trip. Just really two or three things, sort of following up on my comments last meeting on the minimum wage ordinance. Uh, first of all, uh, thank you for, uh, the consideration that you gave to the comments and to, uh, the concerns that were raised both during the meeting and afterwards. Um, I want to thank, uh, the trustees who made the decision to postpone the vote and to take some time. Uh, I think that was very important, and I think it, it served us all well to, to take a breath and to consider things. Second, and really, um, in reflecting on the mayor's comments at the end of last meeting regarding business owners, um, my career has been solely in the private sector. And my experience, um, in the business world is that businesses make decisions, uh, to locate or to close businesses or to relocate for a myriad of reasons. And, um, I would be, uh, I would really encourage us as a community to try to find ways to fully understand the pressures on small businesses. I realize that wages are a, a big element of a small business's budget, but I can tell you for a fact that I'm aware that they are not the sole element and often not the largest. So the reason for people to decide to stay or to go, it tends to be more complex. And I think if we want to grow the village's, um, um, sense of welcome to businesses, we should see if we can do a, a better job of reaching out to them, and I'm, I'm happy to be a part of that. You know, whether it's through the Economic Development Commission or in some other way, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to participate and see what I could do. Um, you know, finally, um, on the question of, of notice and transparency, um, I find it, um, interesting, uh, first of all, I want to say to the Lawlers, I'll try to slow down. Um, you're exactly right. Crawford does get treated as a, as a bit of a highway. Um, but I would have to tell you that I did not expect that the intergovernmental agreement for an engineering study would have the impact that it does. There's no doubt that the board did its job when it came to providing notice for that item or for the item on the minimum wage. But there's a difference between providing notice and really notifying your community of big changes. And especially with regard to the minimum wage ordinance and the level of attention it received at the time, I think we all knew that it was an important public topic. And I would just urge us all together to find ways to reach out and to be a little bit more proactive in ways to engage with people ahead of time, before it becomes an item on an agenda, so that you can really receive input. I think the good news for the folks on Crawford Avenue is that an engineering study is designed to, to allow for that input. And I, I hope that, um, there'll be some thoughtful consideration given to those comments because there's a lot there that should be considered. And the same with things like wages. So I just urge you to be, um, notice is the minimum. You know, getting out there and really trying to get people to, you know, understand what you're about and to get the input early on, that's what transparency is. So I, I just urge us to all work together on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Hello. Um, my name is Linda Simons. Um, I live at thirty-three twenty-one West Capital with my husband. Uh, this is on a more personal problem that we're having on our block. We have a very small block that runs from, um, it's south of Dempster, and it runs from Kimball to McCormick. Very few houses on our block have garages. Um, we, I've lived there forty-one years, as I said, and we've never had a problem. People have always been very considerate of each other, but over the last several years, it's just become unbearable. We have one particular neighbor with two drivers, and he likes to collect cars, so now he's up to five cars on the block. Um, and there's another neighbor who rents in a two-flat, there's two drivers, they have four cars. It's just become ridiculous. And I know that the, you know, street is a public domain, but this man has, it's become his private domain. And it's just, and I'm not the only, I'm the only one here from my block, but a lot of us are very upset about this. It's also a dead end, so it's a cul-de-sac there. And it's just, you know, I am not twenty anymore. I'm friends with Lilian forever, but I'm not twenty anymore, and it's much harder to schleppin' groceries and everything else, and we cannot seem to have enough parking because of this. And I know you don't have an ordinance, um, you know, limiting the number of parking spots for these, for homes, but I'd like to know if it's possible to have an ordinance on certain streets that have very limited, uh, garages. It's, it's just become un, unbearable. And, um, you know, I, it's, you know, I'm reluctant to speak with this gentleman about this. He's not the most friendly neighbor, doesn't come to black parties, doesn't participate in any of the, and we have a really nice block. It's just become really an issue. I've talked to Michelle Brumberg about this personally. It's just become a real issue on our block.
Sure. How do you spell your last name?
S-I-M-O-N-S.
Okay. Got it right. And thirty-three twenty capital.
Thirty-three twenty-one.
Thirty-three twenty-one, okay. Would you leave your phone number with us?
Sure.
Let us call you. I, this is a very tricky problem because you're right, public streets are public streets, but let us see if we can't take a look at it. And if you give us your phone number-
Sure.
-we'll get in touch with you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for listening.
Of course.
Good evening. My name is Gail Schechter. I live at ninety thirty-three B Keating Avenue. And I'm just, um, speaking again around, um, sort of learnings that come out of the whole minimum wage discussion. I did want to say that myself, Margaret, many others, people I have, I didn't know before all of this, we really came together from different walks of life, different parts of the village, and there was, we really came together because of our, um, strong feelings for this. There's no actual organized groups. I, I just wanted to emphasize the fact that we had a commonality of interest. We did pull together, we wanted to add to the record, um, a petition. We gathered about two-hundred-and-forty names, and there are some who left, um, comments, so I'll, I will give this to you for the, for the record. And then I just wanted to add one, one comment, because at the end of the day, we move forward, and as, as, um, as Mr. Clark was saying, notification is just the minimum. So I was thinking about something positive that we might do out of all of this, and, um, I recalled participating back in, uh, November of twenty-fourteen in this Skokie Community Forum. And I, I have a copy here. I mean, it was so well-attended, there were about a hundred-and-forty people. I think every single trustee was there, all of the staff. And so many wonderful ideas came out of it about what Skokie could be in twenty-twenty. It's funny, it felt like a long, a long way away, and here we are at the heels of twenty-twenty. And then it occurred to me that to take a look at the Skokie Comprehensive Plan, and from what I can see on the website, the Skokie passed that plan in two thousand and five, so that's, you know, fourteen years ago. There was an update in, uh, October of twenty oh seven, that's still, you know, a dozen years ago. So perhaps one thing that the village can do, I don't know when the village is going to work on the next comprehensive plan, but to do something that involves different parts of the village. I recall from my prior life, going to every one of the sixteen northern suburbs, and I recall that in Northbrook, they had not redone their comprehensive plan in thirty years when they finally redid it. And what they did was some focus group, they did groups, they actually went to different neighborhoods of, of Northbrook. I thought that was an interesting, um, exercise. Anyway, just a thought that, um, perhaps in looking comprehensively at all the issues discussed today, um, using that comprehensive plan process might, might be the way to go. Thank you.
Well, what we've been thinking, actually, we, we've been discussing it recently, was updating the twenty-twenty. We specifically picked that date. Part of the reason we haven't updated the plan is because there was a little thing called the Great Recession that kind of interfered with trying the plan. When you scale it down, by and large, comprehensive plans are, your transportation overlaid your zoning map. That's what it comes down to. And then you add in a couple paragraphs on economic development. What we are talking about internally is trying to have another forum like the one we did, uh, and do it in conjunction with the idea of twenty-twenty. So, uh, it is something, uh, I recall that plan, uh, and the, it was a Sunday, if I recall correctly, uh, and it was very well-attended. Uh, we had a very good person who guided it. And, uh, we've been talking about who would be a good person to do the next one, but do it, uh, beginning with the twenty-twenty idea, so.
Thank you.
Your idea's well-taken. Yes, sir?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Barco.
John.
And I live on eighty-six thirty-five Leclerc's Avenue. John Barco, B-A-R-K-H-O-U. Uh, my complaint is about, uh, this sticker for the windshield. Went from up to thirty-five dollar to forty-dollar. Okay. Why the people on, and they say online thirty-five dollar, if you come here to the office, you pay forty-dollar? Why you want to spend twice mailing the person who emailed it online, and the person come up here, pay forty-dollar? It's supposed to be- It's supposed to be, I believe, reversed. Then, how many people here have an online account?
A substantial percentage of people-
I'm one of them, I don't. Even barely, I can speak English.
No, I, I, I understand and sympathize. The idea is to try and cut down on, on the long, long, long lines. I come down, usually it's the day before or the day of when the sticker registration is due, and this is not an exaggeration to say that the lines are winding all around the first floor of the finance department out the door. The idea is to try and cut those lines down. We've tried a couple different things the last couple of years, including having people come down and stand in line with tablets, helping people register. You're correct, not everybody is online. You're absolutely right, but a very significant percentage of people in the village are. And our thinking has been, if we give people a $5 discount, then maybe they will move over. The past few years, we've seen a small but increasing number of people begin to do their billing online, water bills, vehicle stickers, things like that. This is the first year we've done it. We'll see how it works. We don't know. We're just trying, I lis, I come down and I listen to what people say when they're standing in line, and those are not happy people.
I'm one of them.
Yeah, I, I understand completely. I-
It's not the four, five dollars, every person, they say $5, $5, but to the government is it $50 million profit?
No.
Well, I mean, you know-
We don't get quite 50 million, but-
You have to take my mathematics.
I will point out, I think we still are the lowest vehicle sticker in the area. Am I correct?
Well, I'm sorry, sir, because I moved from Arkansas, I moved to California, and I moved to here. In Arkansas, I got two vehicles, like a, the Camry was $25, $23, and the truck Tacoma was $27. That's all for license plate. I came here to Chicago, $258, that's for just the license plate, plus now the sticker windshield, plus the, what they call it, sticker for parking permit. My friend, my house, I can park, because if not, I have to have a ticket. I have two PIN number in my house. Have the, have the PIN number belong to the city? Why I should pay tax for it? Why I should park my car, I can't park my car from my house?
Understood.
Secondly, please, I don't know if the right place here or not, about the PIN number, why they send two PIN number for the same address? Just like this year, they send me one, I lost it, they lost it.
I, we, we don't control the PIN numbers, that's the county.
No, I'm saying, because, you know, maybe you guys from the government, maybe you can talk to the right people, they can fix this problem. They, the house have a two PIN number, they can put it on one, on one bill, that's where he can receive it.
Give us your phone number so I can get the information from you.
And one more time, please, sir, if you don't mind, those loud muffler, the car, they have loud muffler. Why you guys, you can't stop and, and do something about it, just like the gentleman over there, he say, the Crawford gonna be like a freeway.
We do have a, an, a ordinance regulating noise. Is it in your neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They have a loud muffler, they come, I mean, just like a F-16, voo, flying. I mean, they shake the whole house, they shake the whole people, like 12 o'clock, 1:00, 3:00 in the morning. I mean, I don't know who they are.
Give us your phone number.
Okay, sir.
We'll see.
To the lady?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry for, you know, but-
It's nothing to be sorry about. That's what we're here for. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I got a lot of ideas, I can give you, yeah, you can make more money.
Thank you, Mr. Barco. Yes?
Thank you very much. Kenneth Mantel, 57 Williamsburg Road, Evanston, on paper, but it's really Skokie, 60203. I am speaking as a business owner here in the village of Skokie. I also represent the Small Business Advocacy Council on the Policy Committee and also a member of the Skokie Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee. I just want to point out to the community that the businesses in Skokie are not out to just try to make a dollar. It's not all about the, the wage ordinance, but it's about feeling targeted. A certain percentage, segment of our businesses in the village felt targeted in regards to the minimum wage, and that's the restaurant business. So I, a lot of our issues that were raised with the minimum wage ordinance had to deal with being feeling targeted. And at the same time, I think a lot hasn't been said about the wages, the jobs that are available in the village with companies like Klein Tools, manufacturing jobs, there's also the technology part, there's also the bus company in Skokie that has wages well in excess of that minimum wage threshold. So although one part of the issue that was being addressed was a wage increase and making sure that the village stood out on that end, but I'd like to also try to get the community to look at the wage earning that you could actually support a family that provides skill training that are being left open. So one part of this has been addressed, and Skokie's taking the lead in being outside of what other communities are doing, which Skokie does welcome everybody, but there are a lot of open jobs, and I think that really needs to be stressed, that these aren't just jobs, these are careers, there's training opportunities for people here. So instead of just worrying about minimum wage jobs which are not meant to sustain a family, we really need to look at working with these other businesses which are trying to fill positions that need to be filled, and they also provide a track for vocational education and advancement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the village board? If not, I think it's trustee Roberts.
Thanks to everyone for coming. Make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.